Your new quarterly bill will depend on the size of your trash cart. The smaller the cart, the lower the fee. By using weekly recycling and composting services, the amount of trash you put into your black trash cart should drop, allowing you to waste less and help reduce your monthly bill by using a smaller trash cart. If you're filling up your current trash cart weekly, we recommend waiting for your compost service to begin before you downsize your trash cart. This way, you'll know what cart sizes best for your household because about half of what you throw in the trash is actually compostable. This includes things like food waste, like kitchen scraps, and yard debris, like grass and leaves. In the meantime, while we phase in composting, customers will receive a monthly credit on their quarterly bill until their compost cart arrives. We'll let you know when your cart is on the way. For existing compost customers, there will be no change in service other than also receiving weekly recycling. At least 30 days before your invoice arrives between December and March, customers will be mailed information with how to log into Denver Utilities Online, denvergov.org/utilitiesonline, to create and manage your account, including your parcel ID and account number. So look out for these letters. Additionally, here are some exciting new features you can do once you create your online account. Manage your cart sizes. We offer small, medium, and large carts for recycling and compost, too. Place service requests for damaged or lost carts. Set up paperless billing and auto pay. Pay online. View current balance and transaction history. View service information. Manage service for multiple addresses. Additional services include monthly large item pickup, Cherry Creek Recycling drop-off, seasonal programs, including leaf drop, tree cycle, mulch giveaway, recycle your holiday lights, and others. We understand that paying for trash service may be new. Know that with these changes, we can reduce the amount of waste households sent to the landfill by as much as 50% and lead the way as a more sustainable city. We appreciate your patience as we grow these programs, and we acknowledge it'll be challenging at first. Our community has shown us that you value moving the needle on sustainability, and we're going to push forward with our commitment, taking every measure we can to make it easy for residents to waste less and protect our environment. Together, we can do this. Visit denvergov.org/expandedcollection for more information.
Full coverage of your Denver City Council begins now.
This afternoon's meeting is being interpreted into Spanish. Samara Alejandro, would you please introduce yourself and let our viewers know how to enable translation on their devices? Alejandro, would you please introduce yourself and let our viewers know how to enable translation on their devices? Council members, please rise as you are able and join Councilwoman Kneech in the Pledge of Allegiance. Council members, please join Councilwoman Kneech as she leads us in the Denver City Council Land Acknowledgement. Thank you very much. Your mic might have been muted, but I think we're good. It was on? Okay. Oh, okay. All right. Thank you. We might need to address that before the next session. Madam Secretary, roll call, please. There are 11 members present. Council has a quorum. Approval of the minutes. Are there corrections to the minutes of February 6? Seeing none, the minutes stand approved. Council announcements. Are there any announcements tonight? Councilwoman Black?
Thank you, Madam President. I've got three meetings in my district this week. The first one is on Wednesday at 5:30. It's a virtual meeting. It is regarding the new University Hills Park. In 2019, the city bought a small piece of property for a pocket park in the University Hills neighborhood. And on Wednesday, people will have an opportunity to review the draft plan for the park. So I encourage people to attend that if they're interested. The sign up is on my website. On Thursday, we have a meeting at 5:30 at the Rossview Hills Library to discuss the planning for the Welcher Golf Course 100th Anniversary. That's at 5:30 at the Rossview, I'm sorry, at the Eisenhower Rec Center at 5:30. And then at 6:45 that same night, we have a meeting about some potential re-zonings and development in the University Hills neighborhood. That meeting is at Denver Academy. All of the details for all of the meetings can be found on my website, and if you have any questions, you can email my office. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Herndon?
Hey, Madam President. As I sit here in my Kansas City Chiefs jersey, I'm actually, I'm not going to talk about my Chiefs just yet, but I did want to say this. What a great game that we had last night. And, you know, February is Black History Month, but I wanted to talk about the Black Excellence that was a part of the Super Bowl on and off the field. If you, if you just weren't aware, and you just, because it was just, the game was so good. First, you could just say the music, and I'll just leave it at that, further away from all the different performances. And then you think about both quarterbacks, Hertz and Mahomes. The first time in a Super Bowl, actually, where two African Americans have faced each other. That's never happened before. And if we think about, you know, majority of NFL players are minorities, the one position where there's not a significant number is quarterback because of the stigma that black quarterbacks are incapable of doing that. And Doug Williams, who was there, was the first African American to win a Super Bowl. And now Patrick Mahomes is only the, is the first African American to win two at that position. So the way that they played and carried themselves was truly remarkable. And for Jalen Hurts, if you didn't know this, his agent is a black woman. And so we think about sports agents. We typically think men. We barely think women, and we certainly don't think black women. So to Nicole Lynn, congratulations for you for representing your client. He will do very well. He's now a free agent. If you didn't know yesterday, Justina Miles, the first African American woman to sign the Super Bowl yesterday, and she is deaf and goes to an HBCU. And so seeing that, it was just remarkable to experience that. And then lastly, another thing that we didn't know is the story about who is so influential in both Patrick and Jalen Hurts' lives are their fathers. Jalen Hurts' father was his high school football coach, Adrian. And then Patrick Mahomes, his dad, Pat, was a professional baseball player. And so the influence that both of these men have had on their sons that they've spoken about was just truly warming as I sat there and watched that game with my son, to see that's truly possible and how his legacy is before him, and he can truly do anything that he wants. So that was just remarkable, and I'm sure there were some things folks didn't know, and I appreciate, Madam President, the offer, the opportunity to share that. And I'll just lastly end it with, go Chiefs. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much. Seeing no one else in queue, there are no presentations, there are no communications, there are no proclamations being read this afternoon. Madam Secretary, please read the bills for introduction.
In Business Arts Workforce and Aviation Services Committee, 23-0078, a bill for an ordinance approving a proposed and mandatory intergovernmental agreement between the city and county of Denver and state of Colorado Department of Higher Education by the State Board for Community Colleges and Occupational Education for the use and benefit of the Community College of Denver to continue activities in CCD's Center for Workforce Initiatives relating to Work Now, a collaborative workforce development initiative to recruit, support, and train local residents in construction and construction-related careers. In Finance and Governance Committee, 23-0080, a bill for an ordinance designating certain properties as being required for public use and authorizing use and acquisition thereof by negotiation or through condemnation proceedings of fee simple, easement, and other interests, including any rights and interests related or appurtenant to properties designated as needed for the Safe Roots to School Project. In Land Use Transportation and Infrastructure Committee, 23-0077, a bill for an ordinance changing the zoning classification for 2030 and 2032 Blake Street and Five Points. 23-0089, a bill for an ordinance changing the zoning classification for 6298 North Argonne Street and DIA. In Safety Housing Education and Homelessness Committee, 23-0043, a bill for an ordinance approving a proposed agreement between the city and county of Denver and the Housing Authority of the city and county of Denver, Colorado, to assist the West Denver Renaissance Collaborative in supporting eligible residents to build accessory dwelling units with a focus on residents in West Denver neighborhoods.
Thank you very much. Council members, this is your last opportunity to call out an item. Councilwoman Kneech, will you make the motions for us today?
Yes, Council President.
Thank you, and yes, see your mics back. We'll do a recap. Under resolutions, Councilwoman Sawyer has called out Resolution 68 for a vote. Under bills for introduction, no items have been called out. Under bills for final consideration, no items have been called out. Under pending, no items have been called out. Madam Secretary, please put the first item on our screens. Councilwoman Kneech, will you please put Resolution 68 on the floor for adoption?
I move that Council Resolution 23-68 be adopted.
Thank you. Can I get that moved and seconded? Excellent. Thank you very much. It's been moved and seconded. Comments by members of council on Council Resolution 68? Councilwoman Sawyer?
Thanks, Madam President. I called this out for a vote. As many of you who attend these council meetings pretty regularly know, I call, I have in the past called out our on-call contracts because there is no reporting on the back end of those contracts. So once we approve hundreds of millions of dollars in contracts, we never see how those contracts are being used on the back end unless it is reported to us. In midsummer of last year, most of city agencies started to report to us, which I very much appreciate. Unfortunately, that seems to have been just a one-stop shop. Council members, if you can just raise your hand if you have received any on-call contract reports from anyone other than the airport, which came in at 2:39 PM today, or Dottie?
Yeah.
Parks has not done a Q4 report. Okay. Yep. So, so no. For those of you who are watching at home, no council members received anything except for a quarterly report from Dottie on Q4, which came in in January, and then the airport one that came in today. This is a real problem because it indicates that on-call contract reporting on the back end is only something that is done by the agencies when someone forces the issue. So I'll be voting no today, and I will continue to vote no on those contracts to ensure that the agencies report that to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else in queue, Madam Secretary, roll call on Council Resolution 23-68.
See, DeBaca?
Aye.
Black?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Gilmore?
Aye.
Herndon?
Aye.
Heinz?
Cashman?
Aye.
Kneech?
Aye.
Ortega?
Aye.
Sandoval?
Aye.
Sawyer?
No.
Madam President?
Aye. Madam Secretary, close the voting and announce the results.
10 ayes, 1 nay?
10 ayes. Council Resolution 23-68 has been adopted. That concludes the items to be called out. All bills for introduction are ordered, published. Council members, remember, this is a consent or block vote, and you'll need to vote aye. Otherwise, this is your last chance to call out an item for a separate vote. Councilwoman Kneech, will you please put the resolutions for adoption and the bills on final consideration for final passage on the floor?
Yes, I move that the resolution, I'm sorry, I move that the resolutions be adopted and bills on final consideration be placed upon final consideration and do pass in a block for the following items. 23-0069, 23, oh, 23-0070, dash 0071, dash 0087, 1595, 22-1595, 23-0081, 23-0086, 23-0045, 23-0082, 23-0083, 23-0084, 23-0088, 23-0091, 23-0105, 23-0060, 23-0065, 23-0062, 23-0063.
Great. And that's been moved and seconded. Madam Secretary, roll call.
See, DeBaca?
Aye.
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Gilmore?
Aye.
Herndon?
Aye.
Heinz?
Cashman?
Aye.
Kneech?
Aye.
Ortega?
Aye.
Sandoval?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Madam President?
Aye. Madam Secretary, close the voting and announce the results.
11 ayes.
11 ayes. The resolutions have been adopted, and the bills have been placed upon final consideration and do pass. Tonight, there'll be a required public hearing on Council Bill 22-1674, changing the zoning classification for 1618 East 38th Avenue in Cole, a required public hearing on Council Bill 22-1673, designating 1618 East 38th Avenue as a structure for preservation, and a required public hearing on Council Bill 23-0005, changing the zoning classification for 2107, 2111, 2115, and 2119 West 29th Avenue in Highland. Anyone wishing to speak on these matters must go online to sign up during the recess of council. If there are no objections from council, we will recess until 5:30 PM.
Celebrate the month of love with a captivating tour of exotic plants that have inspired myths and teased the senses. Escape the winter chill with this tour of purported aphrodisiacs and learn about the secret romantic lives of tropical plants. Peripheral contemplation invites us to step outside of ourselves to gain a broader perspective. Calling for personal and cultural reflection, the remarkably textural works in this monochromatic group exhibition combine medium, subject matter, and message to cultivate contemplation, conversation, and energetic evolution. Precipus features local Denver artist Jared Hankins' work ranging from his inspiring interpretation of iconic ski mountains to detailed structures of...
Welcome and thank you for attending this fireside chat with MSU Denver President Janine Davidson and Denver Mayor Michael B. Hancock. My name is Alondra Reuena, and I'm a sophomore at MSU Denver studying political science with the legal studies minor. I am proud to be a student of MSU Denver, where the wide diversity in people, resources, and programs allows for a welcoming environment, which is accepting of everyone's identity and background, no matter who you are. I would like to thank the university, as well as the EXIL program and the Dream.us program for allowing me this opportunity of a higher education as a first-generation student and DACA student. Although I'm not too certain about what path I will take or where it would lead me, I hope it is one that allows me to be useful and helpful as I continue to learn and experience and improve. I have the pleasure of introducing today's speakers, starting with Mayor Michael B. Hancock, who has served as mayor of the city and county of Denver for the past 11 years. Mayor Hancock is serving his third and final term as Denver's 45th mayor and second African American to hold the position. He is a member of the U.S. Conference of Mayors, where he chairs the Communications and Transportations Committee, is vice president of the National Conference of Democratic Mayors, and is a member of the African American Mayors Association. Mayor Hancock was raised in Denver since he was just 10 months old, and he graduated from Manuel's High School, earned a bachelor's degree from Hastings College in Nebraska, and a master of public administration on this campus from the University of Colorado Denver. Thank you for being here today, Mayor Hancock. We also have MSU Denver President Janine Davidson, who joined the university in 2017 after serving as the undersecretary of the U.S. Navy. President Davidson is a national thought leader in higher education and on topics such as public service, U.S. foreign policy, and national security. She is also a fierce advocate for road runners like myself. So I'm proud to now turn it over to you, President Davidson.
Thank you. Thank you, Alondra. That was fabulous. Thank you so much for being here. It's so great to have the students here, especially the political science majors. How many political scientists do we have in the house? Woo! See? There you have it. It makes me happy. It makes the mayor happy, too. Thanks, everybody, all the students, the faculty, the community members. I think we have a couple trustees in the house, Dewey? Yes or no? Nope? Or on, they must be online, so. I knew they were planning to come. So thank you so much, everybody, for coming today. MSU Denver is the third-largest public university in the state of Colorado, and I would say one of the most, if not the most impactful, especially in Denver. So we are absolutely thrilled to have the mayor with us here today. It is the, Denver is the biggest city in Colorado. It is the biggest city in the region. You are the man, the mayor. It's really critical to us as an anchor institution that we have good dialogue and collaboration and coordination. I just want to say thank you for your leadership and your partnership. We partnered on a couple things, the census, get out the census, but really, what we really partnered on was the pandemic. Y'all were really a fabulous partner for us as we tried to reach into the community with our testing sites, with the vaccination sites, with all those Zoom calls, hours of my life, I'm never going to get back. And the, and what made it, what made it worth it was at least knowing that you were listening, you were on the call, your sense of humor, your passion, and your energy. It was really, really hard. We'll get to that in a little bit, but that was, that was a tough time, but I was glad to have a partner like you. So thank you. Really thrilled to have you here today to reflect on your time as mayor, to inspire our students, and to talk about whatever else you want to talk about. Of course, I got a lot of questions, but I'm sure you might, too. But if you don't mind, I'd like to just kick it off with one biggie. Let's rock it. We did solicit a lot of these questions in advance, so they are mostly from the students. Let's just talk, first of all, about you. Why on earth did you want to be mayor of Denver, and how did you come about that idea?
You know, it's funny, I just did a national podcast this morning, and the same question came up. And here's the reality, I grew up in this city, and in 1982, Denver did something unthinkable. A young Hispanic state legislator decided to run for mayor. He unseated a fort, well, basically a two-and-a-half-term mayor. He came in having taken over half a term for a previous mayor, but anyway, he served 14 years as mayor of Denver. And Federico Peña became our mayor in 82. I'm sitting in middle school at age 12. He walks in the classroom as the newly-minted mayor of our city, and just listening to him and the impact that he would make, and was prepared to make in our city and on all of us, we were excited to see a mayor of color in 1982. And it was just huge. And it was that point that he charged all of us to become part of making Denver a great city. And we took, many of us took it seriously and got involved. And it was from that point forward that I wanted to be a part of Denver and the leadership of this great city. At age 16, I was asked on television, what is it you want to do one day? And I said, I want to be the first black mayor of Denver. And it was inspired by that moment with Federico Peña. Obviously, I didn't become the first black mayor of Denver. Wellington Webb was elected in '91, but it was still a journey and a dream. But becoming, well, doing it or working to become it is different from always wanting to do it. And when the moment came, when then-Governor Bill Ritter decided to run, I'll tell you this funny story, Bill Ritter announces he's not going to run for a second term for governor. And it was the same day that I had a tonsillectomy. And so I'm at home, all drugged up on Ambien for the very first time, and immediately, somehow, that night, all I remember is coming through and seeing a ticker saying, "Bill Ritter announces he's not going to run for a second term."
A young Hispanic state legislator decided to run for mayor. He unseated a fort- well, basically a two-and-a-half-term mayor. He came in having taken over half a term for a previous mayor. But anyway, he served 14 years as mayor of Denver. And Federico Peña became our mayor in '82. I'm sitting in middle school at age 12. He walks in the classroom as the newly-minted mayor of our city. And just listening to him and the impact that he would make was prepared to make in our city and on all of us. We were excited to see a mayor of color in 1982. And it was just huge. And it was that point that he charged all of us to become part of making Denver a great city. And we took the- many of us took it seriously and got involved. It was from that point forward that I wanted to be a part of Denver and the leadership of this great city. At age 16, I was asked on television, "What is it you want to do one day?" And I said, "I want to be the first black mayor of Denver." And it was inspired by that moment with Federico Peña. Obviously, I didn't become the first black mayor of Denver. Wellington Webb was elected in '91. But it was still a journey and a dream. But becoming and what- well, doing it or working to become it is different from always wanting to do it. And when the moment came, when then-Governor Bill Ritter decided to run, I'll tell you this funny story. Bill Ritter announces he's not going to run for a second term for governor. And it was the same day that I had a tonsillectomy. And so, I'm at home, all drugged up on Ambien for the very first time. And immediately, somehow, that night, all I remember is coming through and seeing a ticker saying, "Bill Ritter announces he's not going to run for a second term." And I'm just in and out of dozing. And then my phone rings, and it's a good friend who says, "You're running for mayor, and I'm going to be your treasurer." And apparently, I committed to him at that point. I couldn't remember, but I told him, "Okay, I'll do it." And I was out. I slept for maybe 12 hours that night. And I woke up next morning. He called, and he says, "Okay, here's what we're going to do. We're going to do, 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 do." And I was like, "What are you talking about?" And if anyone's ever taken Ambien, you don't remember anything from the night before. He had the recant to me. The story, slowly but surely, started coming back. But it took about nine months of talking to people, of just having a conversation with people. Even though I was president of the city council at the time, I wasn't sure what I wanted to do. It's a huge impact on your family. It's a major decision. It's a life decision. And ultimately, after about nine months, I decided I- because you know what? When I decided, I would be okay if I lost, is when I decided I would run.
Got it. There's so many lessons there. You've got to not be afraid. You've got to just jump in. Jump.
Just got to go.
Jump. Or maybe there's a lesson about tonsillectomies or something.
Ambien. The story's in Ambien.
But you know, the other lesson, though, is the impact that Federico Peña had on you as a young man or middle-school boy even. And that brings me to another piece. You know, you once worked for Gloria Tanner.
No, I fought- well, campaigned. I volunteered for Gloria Tanner, yeah.
Well, you know, she's an MSU Denver alum.
Yes, I do.
For those of you who weren't paying attention, we lost her. She passed away, I think, just about two weeks ago now. She was the first black woman in the Colorado Senate.
Yeah.
I mean, we definitely claim her as our own here. But here's something she said. In October 27- October 27, 2017, when you declared the Honorable Gloria Travis Tanner Day, she said, "That meant a lot to me because Michael," and then she corrected herself, "the Honorable Michael Hancock, worked in my campaign when he was a freshman in college. My campaign manager used to say all the time, 'Give it to Michael, he'll get it done.'" And he's the mayor of the city now, so that really touched me. Yeah. Any reflections on Gloria?
She was just, if you don't get a chance, if you've never looked her up and studied her, she was just a- she is a dissertation in humility, grace, elegance, power. And her power is derived from the branches that she grew, the people that she nurtured and put out there. All of us at the funeral talked about going to her living room and sitting with her and just saying, "I want to do this." And you didn't run for office, particularly coming from- well, it doesn't matter what community you came from. You didn't run for office in Denver until you went to Gloria Tanner and said, "I'm interested in doing it. I'd love to have your support." And if she anointed you, it was showtime. But she was just a powerful woman, and you would never know she was a queen because she never told you. You just walked away going. That there is the essence of power, right there.
That's awesome. So, she- so you were inspired by Federico Peña. You were anointed by Gloria Tanner.
So many others.
And then you became mayor.
Yeah.
Well, is it what you thought it would be? It seems to me like it is, especially during the pandemic, honestly. I looked around the country and thought, "That is, aside from K-12 superintendent, the hardest job." Tell us a little bit about how you navigated that, what you learned about leadership, or what you leveraged to lead. And as I think it was the mayors and the cities that really led during the pandemic. And Denver was one of them, and that was largely because of you and your team.
You have to trust your team. And I think there are several characteristics of leadership that never change. One is there are two types of leaders. There are visionaries and there are implementers. Typically, visionaries have to have implementers with them. There's just- otherwise, it's just people with great ideas. And then there are implementers who have to have visionaries with them because they have to know what idea, what are we driving toward? They always ask, "What's the end goal here?" So, we can work backwards. And one of the reasons why I say that at the onset of answering this question is you- every leader must have a self-awareness. "Where do I fit?" And they- if you're- once you're comfortable where you fit, then it's okay to say, "That's not my strength." And I think the cities and states that got through the pandemic the best were those where leaders said, "I'm not a public health expert. Bring the data to me. We're part of a team. I'll make the call, the tough calls, but you tell me what the calls we have to make." And we're not going to argue over politics. We're not going to argue over who's right, who's wrong, who's red, who's blue, who's Republican, who's Democrat. We're here to save lives. We're going to let the data dictate to us because, at the end of the day, at some point, that data is going to give you coverage. And ultimately, that's exactly what we did. I had public health experts. That's why you hire them. That's why you put them in place. You hope you never need them, but we did. And they would come to me, and they'd say, "Here's the reality. Here's where we sit. And if you can't- if we don't shut the city down, we're going to lose people." And that was the hardest call I ever had to make ever as a public official. I knew I was putting people out of work. I knew I was going to destroy livelihoods. I knew I was going to hurt businesses. But at the end of the day, we much- we find it much easier to build an economy than to build lives that are gone. And that's what we wanted to do.
Yeah, we talked about it a lot here, too. It's about risk management as well, because you're never going to get it totally right. And so, I feel like we rumbled a little. We had to weigh those things. You know, you're part of- we say, leaders, great leaders think that they move mountains, but bulldozers move mountains. So, great leaders need a bulldozer, right?
That's right. They need a bulldozer. Bulldozer, absolutely. They need a bulldozer, and they need people who dot every i, dot and cross every t. And then there are some people who believe they're both. They're visionary and implementers, and all they do is annoy everybody else in the room. They really do, because they- it's a control thing. But it's a fun dynamic to watch in the group of a room. Matter of fact, let's do a- can we do a quick survey? How many of you in this room believe you are visionaries? Let me tell you what a visionary is. You see things that others don't. You can imagine tomorrow before others wake up. You are mesmerized by dreaming beyond this moment. You constantly can see- I see the problem. Actually, I can see the solution, too. I just don't figure- I'm not into the- how we get there, but I can see it. How many of you are visionaries? Okay? Implementers, I dot every i, cross every t. I'm the one. You show me where we're going, I'm going to figure it out, engineer it, one way or the other. We're going to find a way to get there. How many of you are implementers? That's exactly how society breaks down. You know, 75% of people are implementers. Only 25 of us are real nuts, who are constantly dreaming.
Lots of ideas. Yeah, totally.
Wait, wait. Who thinks they're both? Yeah, the annoyers are in the room.
It's dependent. Right, right. So, you know, the city's changed a lot.
Yeah.
Wow, 11 years? Tell us, talk a little bit about what it felt like when you were coming in as mayor and the priorities that you thought were the most important thing at the time, and how you think that's changed over time.
Well, when we came in in July 18, 2011, the city of Denver, the outgoing mayor, Vidal, said to me, "You have $100 million deficit that has to be corrected within the next 100 days." He said, "It was $175 million, but I took care of $75 million for you, so you're welcome." And then, at the day of the inauguration, we were walking into the inauguration, which was at the Botanic Gardens. And as we walked out of the green room to go outside where everyone was, my communications director, Will Austin, ran up to me and says, "I have to tell you, there was a homicide at the zoo today." And so, within the first few hours, I learned I had a $100 million deficit that I had to close in 100 days, and we had a homicide at the Denver Zoo. And we're going to have to be addressing those issues over the next few hours. But we were still in the midst of the Great Recession. We were trying to figure this thing out. What would be the strategies? And so, fiscal recovery was top of mind. Our children, who we really didn't have any kind of strategy planned to address young people in our city, the development of young people in our city. Education was in- I mean, we had, at the time, a board of education that was absolutely dysfunctional. And, you know, we needed to fix that. I had a police department that was mired in very high-profile, excessive force situations, similar to what we're dealing with today. We have a blueprint. We needed to- we needed to change some things significantly with our police department, and we went about doing those things. And then we had a- we had no vision for the city in terms of the economic development of the city of Denver. And so, we went about the process of the strategic planning for that and moving the city forward. But the reality was, we needed to lay out a vision for everyone. And that's what we spent our 100- first 100 days doing.
Yeah. It's- I often say, being a university president is kind of like being a CEO, but also kind of like being a mayor. And what I mean by that, and you can tell me if I'm right, is that, like, these people don't all work for me.
Right. Exactly. There are 11,000 city employees. Only 61 are direct, directly appointed to the mayor, who are under the will of the- that serve at the will of the mayor. Obviously, you know, there are processes for everybody under the mayor, career service people, civil service employees, that have to be followed. But you're absolutely right. They don't all work for you. But, you know, I'll tell you something about the 11,000 people who work for the city. They're phenomenal. And they do see the mayor as their boss, who sets the stage for the continuation of their careers and for their jobs every day. And the reality is, the mayor being able to stand up and say, "I honor you. You are the implementers. You are the ones who make the city run." I learned that on city council. I don't fill a pothole. I don't pick up the trash. I don't sit across the table from clients who depend on me to help get their children through school or preschool or food stamps in there, and so they can eat. I'm not doing that. And so, my job every day is to honor those 11,000 employees who do and to do everything we can to make their jobs easy.
And so, coming up with a plan, you've got to be- you've got to outreach to the community. You've got to bring people in. What are some of the more- what's the most frustrating thing about being a mayor?
You know, I don't know if there's anything frustrating. I think the media. Yeah, that's it. The media. You know, here's the reality. I think the dichotomy, Wellington Webb and I, former mayor of Denver, Wellington Webb and I had a conversation one day. It's a funny conversation. It's just a- it shows you the kind of contrast between the two generations in which we serve, eras in which we serve. But he said to me, he says, "You know, Mike, you'll appreciate this. He does a thing with his hand. You'll never understand what it was like for me to serve." I had two newspapers, and they followed me around every day and reported everything that I did, every misstep. If I sneeze while I cover my mouth, it was in the newspaper. And he said, "So, you'll never really understand what it was like to be in that environment." And I said, "Mayor, two words: social media." And he said, "Oh, yeah, you're right. You're right. Never mind." You know, here's the reality. Social media, for those- and I was a political science major, and I minored in communications. The first day of class, they teach you in communications, ethics, particularly if you want to be a journalist. And every story, every claim must have three corrobor- corroborates- corroborators of the story before anything goes to print. There are ethics. There are boundaries for a story. Social media obliterated those ethics. You can put anything out there on folks. Hope you don't get sued, but you can put stuff out there, particularly for- on public officials. And unfortunately, the mainstream media, in its rush to be first and not to have the stories taken from them, have, for whatever reason, oftentimes disregarded the same ethics that really manage their industry. And so, I really subscribe to, sometimes, to the philosophy. I heard this great actor by the name of Denzel Washington expouse. He says, "If you don't read the newspaper, you're uninformed. If you read the newspaper, you're misinformed." And there's so often, I've seen stories published that you're sitting- and I know the true story. It's like, "That is so wrong. Where'd they get that story?" And give you another, just an example, so to give you a frustration. We were discussing, this was years ago, in the middle of my term, I decided I was going to undertake a wholesale review for reform of the sheriff's department. We'd had consecutive deaths in our jail at the hands of sheriff deputies. And so, we held a press conference, and I remember sitting in my chair, answering questions. And some question came from one of the members of the meeting, and I didn't answer it. And the next day, it appeared in the story, and she gave an answer. The mayor confirmed that blah, 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 blah would happen. And I looked at the communications director, Amber Middleton, and said, "Where in the world?" I remember answering the question. She asked the question, but I never answered. Where'd she get that from? And so, she called the reporter. And she asked the reporter, "So, where did you get that from? You made up an answer for him." She says, "Oh, his body language." Told me that. And so, that sometimes- and I got to tell you something. In society, and it's so frustrating, we have become so used to news coming to us through all these various means of electronic devices, that we are- we become lazy, and we don't seek out the facts for ourselves. Albert Einstein said over 100 years ago, "I fear the day where we will become dependent on electronic devices, our technology, because we will become a society of idiots." And unfortunately, we are finding ourselves being pulled, congealed. You know, if you don't think that what happened during the Trump era in terms of violence, disrespect, attempt to overthrow the government are not a direct result of that technology overtaking our lives and our inability to seek facts for ourselves, I don't know what greater example we need to show how it threatens our democracy and our civility. I'm sorry. I went off on a tangent, but I care about this stuff.
I teed you right up for it. You know, and that's one of the reasons why we're so passionate about liberal arts and the humanities education here at MSU Denver, because we really do- I really do believe that, we've said it before, it's the dean of the liberal arts college raising his hand over there, right? Look how happy he is. No, really, it's not the science we're getting wrong. It's the politics, and the ethics, and the emotion, and the factionalization, and all of that, so it's tough. Let me ask you another- let me ask you a tough question.
All right.
Okay. Are you ready?
Yeah.
Violent crime.
Yeah.
Just a lot of students were asking about what's happening in the city. We know the rates are going up, or at least that's what the media is reporting. How are you thinking about that?
Well, I think it's a much deeper issue than just violent crimes going up. I mean, the reality is happening all over the country, which should give us all pause, a stop, and say, "What on earth is going on?" I think we have a situation of deinstitutionalization of mental health and lack of services and supports. I think unacknowledged and recognized behavioral health challenges in our own families are leading to a lot of the challenges. I think, yeah, COVID has been a contributing factor. People have been insulated, isolated, locked down. It was frustrating. I think substance misuse is also a contributing factor. I think the economic pressures of people wanting to keep up, trying to keep up, has contributed. So, the bottom line, there isn't one bold or sober issue here. It's a myriad of issues. And so, when- I love when I get messages from people, "Solve the crime problem." And in Denver, we've got more illegal guns. Almost every weapon, every gun being used is an illegal gun, I mean, not registered, stolen from somewhere else. You know, it's- and we expect, unfortunately, we put it on unrealistic expectation on law enforcement to solve society's problems when reality is, most of what's happening is from us deciding. We want people who are going to, you know, elected leaders, going to put resources into the challenges that we're facing. And we need to support our nonprofit community to make sure they have what they need to provide services. And then we, as family members, you know, it's- we got to wake up and understand what our children are up to. We got to wake up. And, you know, the bowler shooter who walked into King Supers and shot up. I'll never forget the interview of his sister, saying, "Yeah, we knew he had mental problems. I saw him with the gun the day before he went into the store. I should have said something." You think? I mean, those are the challenges that, you know, people say, "See something, say something." That is real. We can help avoid some of these challenges. And we- it's so, it's not a one idea. I can't explain to everyone enough how complex the issues of this violent crime rise that we're seeing. We are seeing a lot of issues we've ignored manifest themselves in this crime wave. And as a nation, as a society, we all have to solve it. We can't look to the president, the governor, the mayors, or police to solve it. We all have got to be on board.
Yeah, I can tell you, you're sort of a systems thinker. You know, there's all these things that are interrelated. I like to think about it in terms of a system, a system of systems. But there are nodes in the system that, if you can tweak those, can have a cascading effect. And one of the things that I know some of our own folks at the university have worked on is the STAR program. You think that's been a success, or is it part of the answer? Is it one of these things, you're trying to bring this social work and?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I'm proud of Denver, and I'll tell you why. We like to pride ourselves on skating where the puck is going, to create, craft responses to challenges as a society. And I'll tell you that the STAR program, for those of you who don't know, it's an acronym. Don't worry about the acronym it stands for, but Safety Team Assisted Resources. The R is response. I said, "Resources, response." That's why I look back and say, "Response." And the reality is, it's alternative response to armed police officers showing up into a crises where a gun and a badge is not required. And it frees up your officers really focused on violent or dangerous crime situations, but it sends the proper response to someone who is in crises, particularly usually a mental- a behavioral health crises, whether it's substance misuse or- or, or behavior health or a mental health challenge. And over 3,000 plus responses and not one time have they had to call the police to back them up. So the proper systems are in place for the call taker to decode what's happening and to dispatch the right response. It makes a difference because I think it removes the possibility that an officer may misread a response from this person who's having a crisis. And then you have a different story if they, if they misread and react accordingly. But these people, they show up, these clinicians, these trained licensed clinicians show up and they're able to decode, they're able to help someone in crises. It was preceded by a program called Co-Responder, where we put a clinician in a car with a police officer. Again, Denver's one of the first, if not the second city in the country to do this. And I'll tell you a story. A dear friend of mine from high school, who I hadn't seen in years, reached out to me and said, hey, I'd like to have coffee with you. And I said, okay, we'll, we'll, we'll get it scheduled. And you know, time goes by, days, weeks, and it was a couple of months. She hit back. She said, hey, what about that coffee? I still want to have coffee with you. I said, oh, I'll figure it out. I'm sorry, I'm running. We'll get this done and blah, blah, blah. Another couple of months goes by and she finally said, you know what, look, I want to talk to you. You're showing up this day, this time, we're going to talk. And I'm glad I did because I showed up and she told me about a crisis that she had gone through. This is a high performing federal attorney for the Department of Labor here in Denver. High school classmate of mine, who had just lost her husband suddenly and her kids had gone through their own behavior health challenges and had left to college. She was alone and she was dealing with this, all this going on at one time. Never, you know, just tough times, she said. And I checked out. She said, I found myself deep in depression and I was ready to do it, Michael. I was ready to kill myself. While some coworkers of hers at the Department of Labor called police for a welfare check. Just so happened, the officer who responded had a co-responder in the car with him. And when they knocked on the door, she said, I didn't know who this woman was in civilian clothes. Turns out to be a licensed clinician, social worker, who said, hey, let me talk to you. And decoded the situation, separated her from the police officer and got her in to help. And she said, I wanted to tell you that because I want you to do everything you can to make sure you fund the Co-Responder Program. Keep funding it because it makes a difference. That woman saved my life that day. And she said, I can't underscore that more for you. So it made a, great anecdotal story.
Yeah, because they say, I don't know what percentage of 911 calls end up being not, you know, violent crime.
Yeah.
But somebody just who really needs some help.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
How many have ever ridden with the police officer just on the ride along? Okay, not enough. You should do it. You'd be amazed at how nine, eight out of 10 times the officer's a social worker, as opposed to a law, you know, what we think of an officer. They are being a social worker. So putting these co-responders in the car with the officer or sending the STAR program is a huge difference.
Awesome. Another big issue facing Denver and state is the fentanyl issue. And we had, we had an event here on campus talking about it. And there's a bill, the state that's trying to, you know, decide how much possession is criminal and what isn't. It went from four grams to one gram or whatever, but it's still a lethal dose. Can you tell us a little bit about how you're seeing this crisis, how it's accelerated? And what you think the right approach is?
Like no drug we've ever seen before. Mike Dino, stand up. Who's next to you? Who's to your left there? Stand up, young man, please. Now, act like you're sitting down, but don't sit all the way down. That's how many people are dying every day in Denver to fentanyl. One and a half, thank you. Almost two people a day, a day in our city to fentanyl overdose. 50 times more deadly than heroin, which was considered the most deadly drug. This is a drug we've not seen before and it's very.
And it's tied mountain places, like they're sneaking it into other places.
It's compounded, right? So they're putting in with cocaine, they're putting it in with, I understand with marijuana, but also with oxycontin, stuff that people are using, popping to get a buzz and it's killing them. The family that died in Commerce City, five people in one hit, thought they were taking cocaine. It was pure fentanyl. Dead. I had five or six families come see me last week. We sat in a circle and to hear the stories of these family members, fathers, mothers, sisters, wives, talk about their loved ones, you know, just looking for a buzz and he's gone. Why father got a knock on the door at 2:00 in the morning, his 19-year-old and 20-year-old sons, gone. Same day, found next to each other, having taken fentanyl. 17-year-old girl takes a fentanyl at lunchtime, walks in classroom, gone. There is no amount of fentanyl that anyone should be possessing outside of a prescription from their doctor. No amount. And so we had this argument going on, what, you know, whether, you know, what we should be doing, what should be the right prop, there isn't any because you're playing Russian roulette with it. I have this affinity for watching documentaries on drug lords and gang lords. And I was watching one on drug lords and this drug dealer from Oakland. And they interviewed a drug dealers. Of course, they're camouflaged, you can't see them. And, and they, the guy said, hey, you're dealing with fentanyl. I said, yeah, they love this stuff, man. This stuff is real. He said, and this before it came to Denver, he said, the interviewer said, well, how do you know how much is too much? Because a size of a grain of salt can take out an elephant. Okay? So right now, Colorado laws allows up to four grams before you are hit with a felony. You can possess it. It could kill 2,000 people. So he said, a grain of salt can kill an elephant. He said, the drug dealer said, oh, it's easy. He said, I sell them the drug and then I drive around the corner. And if I come back and they're on the ground, I know it's too much. I need to back off. But that's how I modulate how much I need to put on the drug. It's out there on Netflix, I promise you, Drug Lord in Oklahoma, Oakland, California. This is a deadly drug and one in which we got to do everything we can to sound the alarm, raise a flag. Parents, you got to tell your kids, you can't get a buzz. You're playing Russian roulette because you don't. And by the way, a lot of these, these street level dealers don't know that they're dealing fentanyl. They're dealing oxycontin or whatever. And they don't know it's laced and it's taking people out.
And that's the debate going on though, is about who, where's the criminal line? And so you have thoughts about that, criminalizing the possession, especially even if you thought it was just, you know, something else?
I want to say something very clearly. Those of us who grew up in the 80s, 70s and 80s and 90s, know about the war on drugs. It was devastating to communities of color, particularly the African-American community. We don't want to go back to a war on drugs. The problem with the war on drugs was that it was just a law enforcement's response and nothing else. But we cannot sit back and allow for possession of fentanyl, particularly enough to kill 2,000 people that we dealt on our streets and think it's okay. I'd rather arrest someone who is street level dealing and give them alternatives to get out of this game than allow them to continue to deal. Help us get to who's dealing the big stuff so that we can get it controlled in our communities. Because next time, it may very well be you or your child or someone you love who gets their hands on this stuff. We simply can't allow the gamemanship to be played. So the US attorney is looking at how they hold people accountable who sell the stuff that kill people. We saw an actor killed in New York City, right, took it? And they went and arrested the people who sold it to them on the street. I think that's a great tool to say, tell me where you got it. Otherwise, you were holding a gun that killed someone. So help us understand where you got this. We've got to give the justice system the tools to try to figure out how we stop this trade in our cities. Otherwise, we're going to be stepping over bodies unfortunately, because the casual stuff is being laced with this stuff.
It's so sad, so dangerous. So Denver, you know, I lived here in the 90s and then I moved back and I can't believe how much the city's changed. And even in the last 10 years, it's grown by something like 20% in the population. I mean, how do you think about that?
30.
30%, okay. Talking points here, right? Yeah, it seems like more than that even, you know? So, I mean, how do you think about that? Because it seems to me that it just generates, again, system of systems, all these things. You've got traffic, you've got school issues. Cost of living is the big one for our students and our faculty and staff.
Yeah, yeah, you're absolutely right. And to your point, a systemic, a systemic of, a system of opportunities and challenges that come with that growth. Denver was primed for the growth, quite frankly. We were dusty little town that, you know, that if you look back, think back to, even back to Bill McNichols, the mayor, Mayor of Pinya Webb, Hickenlooper of it all, and handing the baton off to me, you could see the brimming of Denver coming to its, growing into its own. And all the investments that the people, the mayors were making, you can see we were getting ready for this moment. Convention center, tourism, 16th Street Mall, you can just see it all happen, the new airport, it's happening. And then in 2008, we hosted this little thing called the Democratic Convention to Denver. And we were all over the world on television. And interestingly enough, just a couple of years after that convention, Denver became, was named the number one tourist destination in the world. The number of people coming to it in the world. And people had discovered Denver. They discovered downtown, they discovered our climate, they discovered, this is a safe, pretty cool town. And then you started hearing people saying, Mayor said this to me, there's a couple of mayors said, you know, when my kid graduated from college and he was like, Dad, I don't know where I should go, what I should do. He goes, if I were you, I'd go to Denver, Colorado. And then we started seeing the innovators come, entrepreneurs coming, and they were setting up shop. And you can just see kind of the, the kind of the ecosystem growing and getting stronger and more people attracted to it. And here we are. So now you've got rising crime, congestion, housing pressures. And by the way, when our growth burst started, Denver was still in the midst of the economic recession. We were coming out of it. But what we saw was, you guys remember what caused the economic recession? What was it? Housing burst, right? So a lot of folks who were homeowners had been foreclosed on or lost their homes, were now living where? Apartments. And where do you think these millennials who were moving to Denver were trying to move, live? Apartments. And so now you've got this upward pressure of demand that's overwhelming, 30% is huge. And you've got former homeowners in these apartments, you've got people who are trying to repair their credit, who were hurt by the crash or the burst. And you've got these young millennials coming in who want apartments. And so apartment, the cost of apartment living, dwelling was the first sign of our housing explosion because they started going through the roof because demand was outstripping supply. And then, of course, we had not been building houses because of the recession and the foreclosure crisis. So we, it's, you can just see it all. If you just, if we all just go back, you can see it all happening. It's like this was the perfect storm. I think at some point it's going to settle. Where it settles is going to be the big question for us. I think the population growth, we lost a little during COVID. All the experts say that's just temporary. You'll get it back. Not that we're asking them to come back, but that's, that's temporary is what they suggest.
Let me take it up a little bit here. You and I've talked about this before, but the role of cities. It seems to me like cities have been really, well, they've been growing. Pandemic was a little bit of a setback maybe, but that cities are doing things that you might have looked to the state or the federal level before. Like they're stepping up where the state's failing. And I see a little bit of that in Colorado. But I'm wondering, you know, as a political scientist, as well as a mayor, how do you see the role of cities vis a vis the state and the fed, I don't know, in the years to come?
I swear you were listening to the podcast this morning. It's the same question I got this morning from this national podcast guy. But here's the reality, is the view was always that cities were the lowest on the totem pole. You know, federal, state, and you look to the local governments, look, you know, pick my trash up, make sure, blah, blah. But at the end of the day, everything that you think about comes from the city. When you step out on your front porch or your front of your building in the morning, everything you think about at that moment is driven by the city. Your transportation systems, your safety, your quality of life. Oftentimes, your jobs through taxing policy and regulations, everything. Education, the parks, it's driven by the city. Cities represent over 92% of the GDP in this nation. If the cities go, the nation goes. We, let me just say it this way, and I said this to the president. If cities don't recover, the nation doesn't recover. And so what you saw President Biden do was ascend all the first tranche of dollars directly to cities. Not through the states, he came to the cities. Because we can implement it much faster. We got it out much faster than dealing with legislatures and governors. But cities are where the heart system goes. Companies that want to move here want to talk to the mayors of the cities they're interested in. Even more so than the governor. Because they want to know, what is going to be directly in the face of the people that work for me? What do they care about? Their schools for their kids? Yeah. The roads, the bridges, the parks, the safety, trash pickup, police systems, fire systems, medical systems, right? Trash, I mean, all those, those are the things that we deal with every day. So cities are critical to our quality of life. It is important we tune in to see in next spring, who's going to be on city council. It's important you tune in and say, who's going to be the next mayor of the city? Because at the end of the day, they impact you faster and more abundantly than any other elected official in the nation.
So how do you see the, how, what can we do better in higher ed to better partner with the city?
Well, first of all, this campus is a phenomenal, unique dynamic in the life of our city. What is it, 60,000 students now?
It's about 50 with everybody.
50,000 students, 125 acres of land. This is an economic gem, it's a cultural gem, and quite frankly, the future of our entire city from, from the mayor all the way through the system.
That's the quote of the day.
Yeah, it truly is. And one of the things that I've worked on is, is what you and I've often talked about. What are those tentacles, those symbiotic opportunities for us to tap the intellectual and human capital of this campus? And to drive the city, great cities are connected to their higher institution, higher educational institutions. Great cities, you name it, Miami, Phoenix, you just named Los Angeles. They're tied to their higher ed institutions. And what we've tried to do here on this campus is to continue to find opportunities, excuses to say, what about the institutions? How do we better capitalize on their presence, their power, and the opportunities that you all present?
And we were talking earlier about promoting the idea of public service with our students.
Yes.
Something that I'm very passionate about, interns in the city and getting people to think about the great careers that are, that are, you know, potential for city, state and fed actually. But, you know, what, what advice would you give to our students?
No greater service than public service.
There you have it.
And it's, you know, you will not, you know, if you're coming here to be a venture capitalist, to make zillions of dollars, that's not going to happen in this role or you're going to jail. These are great opportunities to make a difference in the life of your city and your children's lives and your mother's lives. And oftentimes, a lot of how I make decisions is based on my family. I think about it, right? And it's funny because it's like, you know, I think about my mom. You know, we have a program today where older adults are able to get, get, I mean, you've got to be 60 and older to get a, 55 and older to get a free membership to our rec program. It came from a conversation with my mom. I said, Mom, she lived across the street, why don't you go across the street and participate? I can't pay for that membership. Like, why are we charging this 70-year-old woman a membership fee? You see what I'm saying? And it's, so we change, it helps, it's, it's, politics is, by the way, everybody in the room is a political scientist. I just want you to know that. Who disagrees? When you're in the shower in the morning, you say, well, I'm going to work and I'm not talking to her, but I'm going to talk to him. That's, those are politics, right? This is where I'm going to put these resources in my home versus these resources over in this area. Those are politics, how you distribute the resources. First thing you learn, day one of political science, how and who distributes resources. Doesn't always have to be money. Who you talk to, who you gravitate toward, how you bring people together and how you make critical decisions. Those are, we all are politicians.
We have to say, the decisions get made by people who show up. So what better way to show up than to serve your city?
Right.
Serve your state. Just be in the room. We want to democratize our democracy by having a lot more Roadrunners working, working downtown. Okay, so here's one for you. As one of the most visible Denver Broncos fans out there, what are your thoughts of the pending sale of the team and the new quarterback and the outlook for this year?
Well, I hope they get the seller team settled as quickly as possible. And I understand there's some pretty heavy hitters that have lined up to buy the Broncos. And what I care about, and unfortunately, we've been spoiled, but I care about the owner being present. I think that matters. You know, most teams that have been great is because of the present, presence of an owner who knows his or her lane. Don't be like Jerry Jones trying to make decisions and you had never played the game before on team, on the players themselves. But I think what Pat Bowling did so masterfully was that he was present without interfering with the people who knew how to select talent and call a play. And I hope that's the kind of, so when they were coming up with names like Jay-Z and- And I hope that's the kind of, so when they were coming up with names like Jay-Z and Bezo, I'm like, they're not going to be present. Jay-Z's producing albums and Bezos running Amazon or whatever he's doing these days. Wonderful names, they got the money, but they're not going to be present. We don't want that. We want an owner who says, this is what I'm going to do. And so I hope they do it. And what was the other one about who? What was the second part of that question?
Just your outlook on the, yeah, well, the ownership and your outlook on the season.
Well, I'm excited that we got a franchise quarterback. And, and you could not have called for a better guy. He's a heck of an athlete. He's been a winning quarterback. And not only that, but he's a great human being. And everyone I've talked to, I called and spoke to mayors of Seattle and Tacoma and said, tell me about him. They said, you've got one heck of a dude. And his wife coming to your town because they are going to be very engaged. And I'm excited about it. I had a chance to meet him at the Rockies game and talk to him. And they are ready to go in Denver. They bought a home, they're putting their kids in school, they're ready to go. So we got a, we got a franchise quarterback finally.
Look excited, look how excited he is on that question. I want to bring it down to another question and then I'm going to open it up for a couple before we wind up. But affordability, we kind of touched on it a little bit. What, what can a city do? What can Denver do to help with housing affordability especially? You know, the median house price I've heard is something like $700,000 now. I mean, it's hurting us, wages, students, everything.
I remember in 93, I bought my first home. It was for $42,000. It was a pretty nice home. Yeah, yeah, seriously. Yeah, 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 that's a car these days. And, and you know, listen, there's very, the city's limited in what it can do, although we have done in our, have done some things in terms of zoning and impact fees, building fees that we have that are going to affordability of housing, incentives that we give the builders to build affordable housing, you know? And we got a housing fund now that taxpayers pass to, and we use those dollars to incentivize, we use those dollars to encumber affordability in housing. But we're limited. I mean, the mass effort's going to have to come through the market. It's basic economics, supply and demand. The reality is we will never build our way out of this situation. We were talking about billions of dollars of single-family home housing. We don't have the land and we certainly don't have the resources to do it. So it's going to have to be a market correction for the most part. But zoning does matter. Density, density around transit corridors matters because we are now truly impacting the cost of someone living and moving about the city. And those are the things that we are driving through policy to help with the issue of affordability.
Sorry, but now you mentioned it, transit, RTD. How are we thinking about that? Because, you know, that's not something that is just in the city. It kind of goes up and down the front range. You know, the area campus has what, three stops plus the one ride over by Mile High? More people come off those trains onto this campus into the city than anyplace else. And affordability, crime, some of those, just general management.
The whole nexus.
That's right.
Yeah.
Talk about that system for us.
Well, we're working very closely with management to address the challenges. They are really challenged with operators right now. I'll tell you that. They are just like every industry, looking, working hard to try to get drivers and operators and their jobs galore open. The city of Denver, by the way, to all of you who get ready to graduate, we have over 1,000 jobs open in the city of Denver. Please come and apply. We'd love to have you. You are the, you are the future leaders of the city. Crime, we're going, we're working very closely with the management. We have to work closely with RTD to deal with the crime issue. Transit has become a good cover for people who want to do illicit crime in our city. And so we are working on dealing with that. Our surge at Union Station is going to remain for a while. And we're changing some of the environment as well around Union Station. But the reality is, you know, it's a nexus, crime, transit, mobility in our city. People will not get on them if they don't feel safe and we get it. And we can't have 70, we cannot sustain a 73% single-occupied vehicle culture in Denver, not at the growth rate that we have. We've got to get people to get out of cars and use other modes of transportation.
Very good, very good. We have about five or 10 more minutes. I'd like to open it up if anybody has any questions they'd like to ask. There you are, way in the back, and then you'll be next. Yeah.
Well, we just talked about one of them. Yeah, everybody answered a question. We, EPA just recommended a severe rating for Denver's air quality. And he asked what policies that he would, I would recommend to ease that. First of all, the policy number one is choose other modes of transportation. The reality is, is that we are 73%, I think we're dropping. I'll check, I haven't checked in about a month or so in terms of SOV. But we've got to drop that. We cannot sustain that. And it's, gridlock will choke us environmentally, but also it will, it will choke productivity. So we've got to, we got to change. But we got to have a system that works, that's affordable, convenient and accessible for people to use transit-wise. That's critical. Continue to build transit, continue to build other modes of transportation and continue to drive density around transit corridors. I think that's incredibly important. We've already made some changes. Energize Denver is a program where we are now mandate certain levels of clean energy for our buildings to drop. So that's the second tier of carbon footprint, right? And, and bad air quality. And our new office of Climate Action in Casser, Climate Action Sustainability and Resiliency is built on staying consistent on implementing those strategies for clean energy and decreasing our carbon footprint. And we've got to continue to drive those policies. And so they'll be generating 40-plus million dollars a year to invest in those services and those efforts. So Denver's already, again, skating where the puck is. Now we got to get the whole community involved in helping people to retrofit electric or clean energy appliances and choosing other modes of transportation. Great question.
Yep, right here.
Yeah, listen, I had a call during COVID and the, when the unrest around the George Floyd murder had occurred, called me. He's chairman CEO of a major company. And he was very emotional. He says, I'm so disturbed by everything that's happening. A white male, but he's a very close friend as well. And so he was very candid. He says, Michael, it occurred to me that I'm part of the problem. He says, you know, I want to diversify my C-suites. I don't have any people coloring my C-suite. So how do I do that? And I said to him, I said, hey, you know why you don't have any black people in your C-suite? He says, no, why? I said, because you don't have any black people in your C-suite. And I'm letting that fall on you because I meant what I said to him. You have to be very intentional about this work, right? You want black people, you got to be intentional about saying, I'm going to go find African-Americans. I want Latinos, I'm going to find Latinos. I want women, I'm going to go find women. I mean, it almost has to become a personal mission for someone to bring it to the campus. I want it, so we're going to go get it. And so you have to be intentional about this because I'll tell you, African-Americans in Texas, Atlanta, DC, Chicago are not sitting around going, I think I'm going to go to Denver, Right? So when you ask what I can do, I did this with the superintendent of Denver Public Schools for the first two terms I was mayor. Wherever I traveled, if I was going to be there for more than a day, I said, I want to go into, I want to meet with teachers of color. And I would market the city to them. We were able to recruit, recruit several African-American teachers from Chicago. But you also have to pay attention to the most important part of that, and that's retention. I don't think once they get introduced to Denver, Metropolitan State University, I don't think you have a problem getting them to come. The problem will be keeping them. So what's the retention policy? So whoever is intentional about recruiting has to be as intentional, if not more, than retaining them.
Because everyone else is recruiting them too.
Well, they're recruiting them too. But listen, I come on campus, Metropolitan Denver. I've never been to Denver before. I'm a new adjunct or new, you know, assistant professor. Where do I get my haircut? I'm sorry. Where do I get my head shaved? You know, and if I'm a woman, I got even more questions. Who's my physician? Who, where do I get my nails? And, you know, I mean, just like those are, those are little things, but they matter, don't they? Right? You ask, so what's that system that greets you at the door and say, welcome? And by the way, here's a list of beauticians I recommend for you. Here's a great couple of neighborhoods I would suggest for you. You know, what else you do? You know, what else you need? We got you.
That is great advice, the onboarding advice.
The onboarding is huge.
Super important. And then, you know, you made the point when you started off today about just seeing Mayor Pena, another man of color, and how important it is to have those role models. And rest assured, it is something that we are focused on for sure. And especially focused on, you know, the experience here. We have a very diverse senior team. Faculty are diverse in pockets, but not everywhere. So it's, it's a huge issue in higher ed and it's something that we take very, very seriously. I know you also started a program here, My Brother's Keeper.
My Brother's Keeper.
Which was launched by Obama, President Obama. You want to talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, you know, quickly, the president started My Brother's Keeper in his second final term in office. And there were a few of us, he called directly and said, hey, listen, I'm doing this and I need you to do this. And it resonated with me as an African-American in a city that is 10% African-American. And I think that speaks largely of Denver. And Denver's elected one Hispanic, two African-Americans with a population that, populations that have been overwhelmingly white. But I think it says something about our city. But one of the things you don't get a chance to do often is to sit and think about, what's my impact on the community I come from with kids who look like me? And again, you got to be very intentional. And so for the president to do what he did, it was very personal to him to engage in this work and say, how do we uplift African-American young men in particular? Started with African-American young men. And young ladies got involved. And then we had Latino children getting, young people get involved. But the bottom line is, I adopted the program the moment the president called me and said, absolutely, we got to do this. And let's go to work. And to be able to look those young people in the face and say, I was sat in your chair. That used to mean nothing to me, by the way, when adults said it, but I was there. I came from your hood. I know exactly what you're dealing with. Matter of fact, let me tell you what you're dealing with. I'm going to tell you so I can understand. I, I relate to what you're dealing with. And sometimes all it takes is someone to say, I get it. I hear you. I feel your pain. And I'm going to help you. And that's really what My Brother's Keeper is all about, to introduce them to opportunities, to do internships in the private sector, public sector, to expose them. And I'm grateful that Federico Pena exposed me to being a mayor. I was his intern for three summers and made a difference being that close and that personal with the issue. I wasn't fascinated by it. I knew it was work. And then when we got in there, we were going to have to go to work.
I love your passion. You know, some of our MSU Denver students were in that program with you, so.
Yes, we do, yeah.
Go Roadrunners. I think we are out of time.
We're out of time.
We are out of time. Any last words of wisdom for our students that you would like to share?
Well, you know, listen, first of all, let me thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Davidson, who I am a huge fan of. And, you know, you all are very fortunate to have such a leader, visionary leader as Dr. Davidson and to bring the wealth of wisdom experience that you bring to this campus. We were all excited when you got here and you've not, you've not disappointed us. So thank you. Can y'all give her a round of applause? I'm a huge fan. And I want to thank all of you. I was an adjunct professor while I served on city council for Metro. I loved it, loved the time being in a classroom to talk politics, to talk history and, and to be able to, to pour into you. I see them today, there's some adults who, they're adult, big adults now, who work at City Hall that I taught when I was an adjunct here. And the only wisdom, I don't know if it's wisdom, but the only thing I'll give you is, is you, you know, you may not be able to control what you are and where you are today, but you can be, control where you go and what you become. And, and that was shared with me at the age of about 16, and it made a world of difference. And I wish you all well and you have a city that has its arms open waiting for you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. This is it. This is your last year. Maybe next year you'll be teaching our students on the campus. We'll be super happy to have you. I want to say thanks to everybody again. Cora, Kylie, David on the logistics, Casey, Sophia, you guys are rocking it. If any of y'all are interested in MSU Denver's government advocacy efforts and learning more, you can support our relations with the city and the state, sign up for the MSU Denver Champions Program. And you heard it from the mayor right here, work for the city. Thank you.
You have things you've been wanting to say, things that have been on your mind and in your heart for some time now. They are ideas you love and believe in, ideas you just can't keep to yourself any longer, ideas you want to share with your community to engage, to inform, to connect. Denver Community Media provides you access to the training, the video tools, the creative space, everything you need to make your ideas come to life. At DCM, you have the voice to freely express your ideas through the power of video. Learn how to produce, shoot and edit your video program by collaborating with other members of the community who share your same creative ambitions. Denver Community Media is a welcoming and supportive creative environment and is your one-stop location for access to the state-of-the-art production resources you need. DCM's multi-camera studio comes equipped with industry-standard tools, including teleprompter, green screen, multitrack audio recording and live stream capability. Broadcast and live stream from our digital podcast studio, which includes live video caller integration, live telephone call-in and texting capabilities. There are also plenty of equipment options available for your next field shoot, including access to professional video cameras, light kits, tripods and wireless mics. On top of this, we have video edit workstations designed for multicam cutting, color grading, motion graphics and audio post-production. And we offer editing and certification classes taught by experienced industry pros, while coaches provide one-on-one expertise and opportunities for mentoring. Once your production is complete, the ideas you treasure can be shared with the community through DCM cable and social media platforms. You have something to say. Let's give it some air. Let's make it happen with Denver Community Media.
Hey, Denver, let's get ready to take action on climate change. Our residents have spoken, asking for better, more convenient ways to recycle and compost. Together, we can limit the amount of waste we send to the landfill and reduce greenhouse gas emissions. The city and county of Denver will begin offering weekly recycling in January 2023 and phase in composting services starting in summer for every customer. Here's what that means for you. Starting January 1st, 2023, every household in Denver will now have weekly recycling pickup. So just make sure to have your purple cart on the curb or in the alley on your regular trash day when it's full. Additionally, composting services will be available to all households. These green carts will be rolled out throughout the city starting in the summer. You will receive a notice in the mail before your cart arrives with information to help you compost your food waste and yard debris correctly. The city is moving toward a pay-as-you-throw model and will offer customers the option to exchange their current trash cart size for a small, medium or large one. Your new quarterly bill will depend on the size of your trash cart. The smaller the cart, the lower the fee. By using weekly recycling and composting services, the amount of trash you put into your black trash cart should drop, allowing you to waste less and help reduce your monthly bill by using a smaller trash cart. If you're filling up your current trash cart weekly, we recommend waiting for your compost service to begin before you downsize your trash cart. This way, you'll know what cart size is best for your household because about half of what you throw in the trash is actually compostable. This includes things like food waste, like kitchen scraps, and yard debris, like grass and leaves. In the meantime, while we phase in composting, customers will receive a monthly credit on their quarterly bill until their compost cart arrives. We'll let you know when your cart is on the way. For existing compost customers, there will be no change in service other than also receiving weekly recycling. At least 30 days before your invoice arrives between December and March, customers will be mailed information with how to log into Denver Utilities Online, denvergov.org/utilitiesonline to create and manage your account, including your parcel ID and account number. So look out for these letters. Additionally, here are some exciting new features you can do once you create your online account. Manage your cart sizes. Manage your cart sizes. We offer small, medium, and large carts for recycling and compost, too. Place service requests for damaged or lost carts. Set up paperless billing and auto pay. Pay online. View current balance and transaction history. View service information. Manage service for multiple addresses. Additional services include monthly large item pickup, Cherry Creek Recycling drop-off, seasonal programs, including leaf drop, tree cycle, mulch giveaway, recycle your holiday lights, and others. We understand that paying for trash service may be new. Know that with these changes, we can reduce the amount of waste households send to the landfill by as much as 50% and lead the way as a more sustainable city. We appreciate your patience as we grow these programs, and we acknowledge it'll be challenging at first. Our community has shown us that you value moving the needle on sustainability, and we're going to push forward with our commitment, taking every measure we can to make it easy for residents to waste less and protect our environment. Together, we can.
Tonight's session is being interpreted into Spanish. Samara Alejandro, would you please introduce yourself and let our viewers know how.
In January on Elevating Denver, we take a look back at 2022.
And it's so exciting.
Celebrate the new year with a Mile High City retrospective of the people, places, and events of 2022.
It's pretty cool. Everybody's engaged, everybody's excited, happy. So I think it could be better timing.
Join us for our favorites on the next episode of Elevating Denver. Winter is here, and icy sidewalk conditions can be dangerous for pedestrians. All Denver property owners are responsible for the sidewalk in front of their property. If you see an icy spot on a public sidewalk, call 311 or report the problem through pocketgov.com. Remember to include a picture if you can, as they are always helpful to identify the exact location. The city will then send out a neighborhood inspector to the address as soon as possible. Businesses and apartment buildings are required to begin snow removal as soon as it stops snowing. Residential properties have 24 hours until they have to shovel. Let's all do our part to keep Denver's sidewalks safe for everyone. Denver 311 and PocketGov are helping you navigate Denver City Services. Celebrate the month of love with a captivating tour of exotic plants that have inspired myths and teased the senses. Escape the winter chill with this tour of purported aphrodisiacs and learn about the secret romantic lives of tropical plants. Peripheral Contemplation invites us to step outside of ourselves to gain a broader perspective, calling for personal and cultural reflection. The remarkably textural works in this monochromatic group exhibition combine medium, subject matter, and message to cultivate contemplation, conversation, and energetic evolution. Precipice features local Denver artist Jared Hankins' work, ranging from his inspiring interpretation of iconic ski mountains to detailed structures of bridges and roller coasters. Snap a selfie and steal a smooch at the Lovin' on the Block Heart Installation. This sweet and colorful art piece will feature large-scale sculptures of favorite childhood Valentine's candy, including conversation hearts, lollipops, and candy necklaces. It will be displayed in the alley the entire month of February. In a rematch of last year's Stanley Cup Finals, won, of course, by our Colorado Avalanche, the Tampa Bay Lightning visit looking for payback and to spoil the Valentine's Day party. Don't get pinned down with nothing to do. Check out the Colorado High School State Wrestling Championships at Ball Arena. Sessions are scheduled throughout each day. Hailed as an audience favorite at the 2020 Colorado New Play Summit, hotter than Egypt is the captivating tale of an American couple's own personal revolutions. And that's a quick look at what's happening in Denver this week.
The Snow Angels program was born out of Denver days, which is an initiative that Mayor Hancock started about 10 years ago. It's an idea that neighbors continue to help neighbors through the snowy months, and something that the Snow Angel program does is it creates an opportunity for neighbors to assist neighbors who are unable to shovel their front walks, whether it be because they're living with a disability, or they just don't have the funds to be able to pay for private services, or elderly adults. We have 600 homes currently who need assistance shoveling their walks. We only have about 278 volunteers across the city. So there are 78 neighborhoods in Denver officially. 22% of those neighborhoods do not have a volunteer in them, so it's roughly 17 neighborhoods that don't have anyone who has signed up to serve those needs.
So the sign up for the Snow Angels program was pretty easy. I'm pretty sure I just entered my address and my neighborhood area, and then when it snows, I get an email that has a list of addresses without people's individuals' names of places that need to be cleared from snow. And then that gets sent to kind of all of the volunteers in that particular area. And then you just go and see what's been done or what hasn't been done. And because they're clustered into neighborhoods, they're all pretty close.
So the volunteers that we're looking for is anyone who wants to assist their neighborhood. They can go onto our website, which is denvergov.org/snowangels. They would sign up to be a volunteer, and during a snowstorm, they would receive an email and they would say, in your neighborhood of Belcaro, we need some assistance with your neighbors. Here's an address of someone you can go help. And so really, it is anyone who's looking to assist their neighbors. We have snow shovels that we give to all of our volunteers. So if someone signs up to be a snow angel, they receive one of our shovels so that they don't have to go out and buy one if they don't already have one.
It feels important to me for neighbors to help neighbors because there are a lot of needs in our community, and sometimes it can be hard to know how to contribute. And I know there are lots of ways to get involved. If someone likes the snow, if someone likes physical activity, if someone just wants to have like an easy, doesn't take that long, like sometimes even 15 minutes, way to contribute, I think Snow Angels is a great program for that. I think for folks who might be hesitant to sign up, I know that there can be a lot of shame or stigma around needing help, and there's this value around being independent. But really, people like me want to be able to help and want to be able to allow folks who need a little bit of assistance to still be a valued part of our community.
I had a woman call me a couple days ago. She's 80 years old. Her husband is a veteran who is almost 90, and they can't risk the fall, especially when it gets very cold outside. The snow tends to freeze, and then there's an option for slipping and falling. And they just are unable to put their own health at risk in order to do that. So somebody who is elderly would require some assistance. Same thing with someone who might be living with a disability, somebody who has a walker or a cane or something along those lines. It's very dangerous to be out on front steps and on front walks when it's snowy and cold.
I definitely feel a neighborhood pride in making sure that the area is accessible. The winter can feel really miserable to people sometimes. The days get shorter, it gets darker, it gets cold, people stay inside. And it's helpful just to have a little bit of neighborly care. And whether people notice or not, I think putting that out into the neighborhood is helpful for creating the kind of place that I want to live in.
I would say that volunteering is a matter of the heart. I think that if you feel the need to help out, but you don't know where to start, a great start would be in your own neighborhood. You don't have to make your way across the city in a foot of snow to be helpful, to be of assistance, you know? It takes just a short amount of your time, and it makes you feel good.
I secretly, although now not so secretly, love shoveling. And the reason that I love it is because it's a pretty active thing to do outside. And so in the morning, rather than just like cuddling inside where it's nice and cozy, I'll put on all my layers and go outside and like make it a workout. And so I'll try to like hinge at the hips and use good posture and make it kind of a game and make it feel active. And normally, it's either snowing, which feels like a winter wonderland, or it's already sunny and beautiful, and then it feels like a fun outdoor activity.
Welcome to your Denver City Council. Please stand by. Full coverage of your Denver City Council begins now.
Welcome back, everyone. On the second Monday of most months, Denver City Council, in partnership with Denver Arts and Venues, celebrates our thriving cultural and creative sector by featuring talented artists and cultural organizations that really make our city great. Yasmin Imani is an alternative soul singer, songwriter, actress, and Denver native. She's been singing here in Denver most of her life and has been releasing music since 2020. She's passionate about creating a unique sound and writing style that helps bring storytelling back to music. You can stream her songs on all streaming platforms and keep an eye out for her next single, which is going to be released tomorrow, February 14th. We would love to welcome Yasmin Imani to chambers. Welcome, Yasmin.
Thank you all for having me here. I'm going to be singing an original song today that you guys can find anywhere afterwards. It is titled "In the Dark," and thank you very much.
Yasmin, that was glorious. Thank you so much. You can find Yasmin online on Instagram, Spotify, Apple Music, and YouTube. Thank you very much for being here. What a treasure you are. What a treasure you are. Let me get to our regular business. All right. Council will now reconvene. There is no unfinished business. There are no proclamations being read this evening. We have three public hearings tonight. For those participating in person, when called upon, please come to the podium. On the presentation monitor on the wall, you'll see your time counting down. For those participating virtually, when called upon, please wait until our meeting host promotes you to speaker. When you're promoted, please accept the promotion, turn on your camera, if you have one, and your microphone. All speakers should begin their remarks by telling council your name and city of residence, and if you feel comfortable doing so, your home address. If you have signed up to answer questions only, state your name and note that you're available for questions of council. Speakers will have three minutes. There is no yielding of time. If translation is needed, you'll be given an additional three minutes for your comments to be interpreted. Speakers must stay on the topic of the hearing and must direct your comments to council as a whole. Please refrain from profane or obscene speech and refrain from individual or personal attacks. Councilwoman Kenech, will you please put Council Bill 22-1674 on the floor for final passage?
Yes, I move that Council Bill 22-1674 be placed upon final consideration and do pass.
Thank you very much, and it's been moved and seconded. The required public hearing for Council Bill 22-1674 is open. May we have the staff report? Hi, Fran.
My name is Fran Peñaciel with Community Planning and Development, and today I'll be presenting the proposed rezoning at 1618 East 38th Avenue. I divided my presentation in four sections, so we're going to start with the request. This is an applicant-driven application requesting to change the zoning classification for 1618 East 38th Avenue from a very prescriptive former Chapter 59 PUD 17 to UMX 2X to allow for the redevelopment of an underutilized lot. The subject site is located at the southeast intersection of East 38th Avenue and North Franklin Street, and it has an existing structure that was built as a church in 1888. Concurrent with the rezoning, but under a separate landmark designation application, the applicant is proposing to locally designate this structure as a landmark structure. This will ensure the historical, architectural, geographical, and cultural importance of the structure will be protected through city review of building modifications. Now let's take a look at where is the subject site located and what does the surrounding context look like. The proposed rezoning is located in Council District 9, which is Councilwoman's Cita Baca district, and it is in the Cole neighborhood. The subject site is currently zoned PUD 17, which is a former Chapter 59 PUD zoned district. The PUD is highly customized for the existing building and current uses that have been in place since the PUD was approved in 1979. PUD 17 allows for pottery studio with limited retail sale of work crafted on the premises, an art gallery, and permitted pottery instruction. The existing land use shown on the map is single-unit residential. The property is occupied by a one-story building, built in 1888 as a church. In 1979, the property was rezoned to allow for the use of the pottery studio. The site is mostly surrounded by other single-unit residential uses to the east and south, and there is also some multi-unit residential to the north and public quasi-public and office uses to the west and northwest. The next two slides show the existing context surrounding the subject site with the proposed rezoning site shown here on the top-left image. You can see that the site is mostly empty, but you can see the church over there in the back. And here are some aerial views that were provided by the applicant that show the church from there. And in this one, you can see that there are some other neighborhood-serving mixed use in some corners nearby. Now let's take a really quick look at the process. Throughout the rezoning process, application notifications have been provided according to code requirements. Planning Board recommended approval unanimously on December 7, and the case was presented to the Land Use Transportation Infrastructure Committee on January 3. Staff has not received any comment letters, but the applicant provided one letter of support from the Cole Neighborhood Association. Now moving on to the review criteria in the Denver zoning code. For a rezoning to be approved by city council, it must be found that the requested map amendment is consistent with five review criteria found on the Denver zoning code. Our role as staff planners is to evaluate the district, the requested district, in this case, the UMX 2X, against these five criteria. The first criterion is consistency with adopted plans. There are three plans applicable to this rezoning. We have Comprehensive Plan 2040, we have Blueprint Denver, and we have the Elaria-Suancea Neighborhood Plan from 2015. Stated in the staff report, the rezoning is consistent with several goals in Comprehensive Plan 2040. This map amendment will promote equity by creating a greater mix of housing options in every neighborhood, and it will lead to an environmentally resilient Denver by promoting infill development where infrastructure and services are already in place. Now moving on to Blueprint Denver, the subject property is shown in the context map as the urban neighborhood context. The subject property is mapped as residential law in the Future Places Map. This classification includes predominantly single and two-unit uses, but limited mixed use on neighborhood-serving retail might be found in some key locations, as well as where commercial uses have been already established. Bacon-institutional uses on corners or selected sites might be appropriate locations to introduce additional residential intensity. Buildings are generally up to 2.5 stories in height. The proposed rezoning is consistent with the Future Places Map because the subject site has historically been non-residential and mixed use, is embedded in a one-unit and two-unit residential area, and is located along a corridor street. The proposed UMX 2X zone district is a mixed-use zone district that is calibrated for neighborhood-serving retail, and the proposed UMX 2X zone district has a minimum, a maximum, two-story building height. The Growth Area Strategy Map shows that this area is all other areas of the city where we expect a 10% job growth and 20% in housing growth by 2040. Now looking at the Elaria-Suancea Neighborhood Plan, this plan was adopted by city council in June 2015, and while the subject site is technically outside of the neighborhood plan boundary, the study area for the plan includes additional acreage laying beyond the statistical boundaries of the Elaria-Suancea within a half-mile radius of the 38th and Blake Station. The plan reinforces recommendations from the adopted 38th and Blake Station area plan from 2009, while updating recommendations related to land use and building heights area within the statistical Elaria and Suancea neighborhood. The proposed rezoning to UMX 2X will facilitate mixed-use infill development in an underutilized site in close proximity to a commuter rail transit station. The proposed zone district would facilitate adaptive reuse of an importantly historic mixed-use structure by allowing additional compatible uses and allowing for the construction of new housing, which furthers goals for increasing access to housing and provide a diversity of housing types in the area. Given these factors, the proposed rezoning is consistent with the Elaria-Suancea Neighborhood Plan. Staff also finds that the requested rezoning meets the next two criteria. The rezoning will result in uniformity of district regulations, and it will further the public health, safety, and welfare, primarily through its implementation of adopted land use plans. The proposed zone district will facilitate housing density near a mix of uses and transit amenities. The zoning on the subject site is a former Chapter 59 PUD. Rezoning from former Chapter 59 zoning into the Denver zoning code is an appropriate justifying circumstance. Additionally, rezoning out of the existing PUD 17 will provide more flexibility to modify the site to accommodate changing conditions in the neighborhood, as evidenced by recently recent developments west and north of the subject site. Lastly, the proposed rezoning is consistent with the urban neighborhood context, mixed use, 2X zone district purpose and intent. Based on finding that all the review criteria has been met, staff recommends approval of the rezoning application.
Thank you very much, Fran. We have three individuals signed up to speak this evening. I'll call the first couple that are in person, and then we will go to those participating virtually. If you're here in person after your name is called, please make your way to the front bench. Our first speaker is Nathan Beal.
Hello, my name is Nathan Beal. I'm a Denver resident, and I'm the owner of the church at 1618 East 38th Avenue. And just wanted to introduce myself and say we're excited to have the opportunity to renovate the church and hopefully add some gentle density to the site that will match into the current neighborhood, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much.
I am Ryan Gould. I'm the architect working with Nathan Beal, also a Denver resident, just happy here and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you very much. Our next speaker signed up in chambers is Michael Flowers.
My name is Michael Flowers. I'm representing Historic Denver. Our offices are located at 1420 Augen Street. We're an organization that exists so that Denver's unique identity, cultural landmarks, and historic places are thoughtfully maintained, actively used, and relevant for all generations. Historic Denver is in full support of this rezoning and the designation public hearing that will follow after this of the former Swedish Evangelical Lutheran Church, 1618 East 38th Street. This project, much like the Robinson House, approved early last year, is a perfect example of how historic preservation and new construction can work together. This packaged rezoning and designation will preserve one of the neighborhood's oldest structures, which is a house of worship that served the community for nearly 100 years and has been a permanent fixture in the neighborhood since 1888. It will be protected by ordinance and remain a part of the neighborhood. The church that sits adjacent to the land to be rezoned to UMX 2X was also identified during Discover Denver survey and represents early history of the neighborhood. Nathan recognized this and reached out to Historic Denver, and we discussed projects and eventually came to the conclusion to designate it. And Historic Denver authored that designation application. And so we believe this will ensure that the building will continue to stay there and continue to be used, as well as allowing for some additional housing, some new construction in the adjacent land next to it. Projects like this highlight that it is possible to add some density and build new without destroying our historic buildings, as often is the case. And as I mentioned before, we drafted the landmark designation, and I'm here to answer any questions about the preservation side of things. Thanks.
Thank you, Michael. Our final speaker signed up is joining us via Zoom, and that's Brandy Majors.
Oops, sorry about that. I was having technical difficulty. Has there been a traffic study on this, in this area? And ultimately, what type of changes are you going to make to this landmark? It has been in our community for a very, very long time, and I'm glad to see that the owners are there. That's pretty much all I have to say.
Thank you very much. That concludes our speakers. Are there questions from members of council on Council Bill 22-1674? Okay. Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Are there comments by members of council on Council Bill 22-1674? Okay. Madam Secretary, roll call on Council Bill 22-1674.
Cita Baca?
Aye.
Black?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Gilmore? Herndon?
Aye.
Hines? Cashman? Kenech?
Aye.
Ortega?
Aye.
Sandoval?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Madam President?
Aye. Madam Secretary, close the voting and announce the results.
Eleven ayes.
Eleven ayes. Council Bill 22-1674 has passed. Thank you, everyone. Councilwoman Kenech, will you please put Council Bill 22-1673 on the floor for final passage?
I move that Council Bill 22-1673 be placed upon final consideration and do pass.
Thank you. Can I get a motion and second? Thank you very much. It has been moved and seconded. The required public hearing for Council Bill 22-1673 is open. May we have the staff report? Hi, Cara.
Cole neighborhood, which you guys just approved for the rezoning. Here is a map to give you a little bit of context. The brown are the historic districts, and the red are the individual landmarks, so there aren't a lot of landmarks in this particular neighborhood. And as we're looking at this, Fran was talking about the entirety of the site. For the landmark designation, it's actually just the building itself. So as you look at this, the red box is the boundary for the landmark, so it's just designating the church itself, not the rest of the adjacent property or land. As you guys are aware, in order for a property to be designated, it needs to meet the designation criteria, which is that it maintains integrity, is 30 years of age or older, and meets at least three out of 10 criteria, as well as having the LPC consider the historic context. And so we'll go through the three criteria. The first is its direct association with the historical development of the city. This particular property, the church, was built by Swedish immigrants who came out to the West. They often worked in places near industry or railroads, and so this is part of the development of the Cole neighborhood. Churches and other buildings were often embedded within the community, so it was in walking distance of the residents. And this was a very vernacular church that fits the working-class neighborhood and the working-class neighborhood, the community that lived there. The architecture of the church mirrored what you were seeing within the community. And it continued as the Swedish Lutheran Church from 1888 through about the 1950s. And then as the demographics of the Cole neighborhood began to change, so did the church. And so as there was a higher rise in Latino residents, it became the Spanish Seventh Day Adventist Church. And then as the demographics continued to change within the Cole neighborhood, it became the Rising Star Baptist Church when it was a primarily black community. In about 1980, there were fewer people within the community, and so it became, it was sold from a church and became a residential property. Other properties also significant for its architectural style or type. And we often designate, you know, really high-style buildings, buildings, you know, churches that are, you know, that are Gothic churches. And this is a vernacular form of this. It's a simple and relatively unadorned building, but there are important details that denote that it is a church. You have the flared eaves, the cosmetic buttresses on the side here, you have the vestibule and the arched window or vent. And so these have some details that are reminiscent of the Gothic Revival churches, but are a much more vernacular style. And so this is significant for its vernacular Gothic building. And then finally, it's significant for its rarity. This is a rare example of a vernacular church that has survived here in Denver. Often, working-class buildings, they are changed, they are significantly altered, they're demolished because people don't deem them as important because they don't look like the really high-style churches. And so this is a good example of a church that's embedded within a community, that's a vernacular church, and it's really rare to see something like this that hasn't been radically altered from the time period of its use. So the Landmark Preservation Commission considered the historic context and the period of significance, that it's directly related to the working-class Swedish immigrant community, and then it went on and evolved and changed over time as the demographics of the neighborhood changed. It was built in a vernacular style, relatively unadorned, that reflected the initial community. And the period of significance is 1888, when it was initially built, through 1980, when it changed use from a church to a residential property. And then we look at the integrity. Does the building look like what it used to look like? And so the changes to it, the stucco on it, happened during the period of significance. So the stucco was added in the 1930s, but it continued to be used as a church into the 1980s. So the stucco is part of the history of the church, and so it retains good integrity. The only primary change is there had been an addition that has been removed, and so you have a little bit of change here at the rear of the building, but overall, the church still reads as a vernacular church and retains integrity. And so the Landmark Preservation Commission found that it was over 30 years of age, it met at least three out of the 10 criteria, that it retained integrity, and that the LPC considered the historic context. So we are recommending that you approve this as a landmark, and I'm happy to answer questions if you have any.
Thank you, Cara. We have two individuals signed up to speak this evening, three actually, if you include our property owner. Nathan, you are welcome back up. You do not have a time limit as the property owner for this one.
My name is Nathan Beal. I'm the property owner of 1618 East 38th Avenue.
My name is Nathan Beal. I'm the property owner of 1618 East 38th Avenue. Again, just want to reiterate, I'm excited to every store this church and bring it back to what it used to look like.
Great. Thank you so much. Our next speaker signed up in chambers, Michael Flowers.
Thanks for allowing me to speak again. My name is Michael Flowers, and I'm, again, representing Historic Denver. Offices at 1420 Augen Street. There isn't a whole lot to add that Kara didn't talk about in her presentation that wasn't mentioned in the previous hearing. But I did want to step up and say again that Historic Denver fully supports this. And we did author the landmark designation because we support the project and would like to see this church designated. We worked closely with Nathan to ensure that the designation goes through as part of the rezoning process. As was mentioned, vernacular buildings like this can be pretty rare. They're often demolished, altered, you know, done away with, seen as insignificant. But it tells a huge part of the neighborhood's history, as Kara explained. And so thank you for your time and consideration, and we hope that your landmark is proper. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Our final speaker is joining us via Zoom, Brandy Majors.
Yes, thank you for having me again. I'm excited to see it stay as a landmark as well. I would have hated to see it transformed into anything other than what it's, what it's there for. I mean, we're already losing a lot of, a lot of historical value in our community. So I would really like to see this stay as a landmark. So I'm kind of glad it is up for the least discussion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes our speakers. Are there questions from members of council on Council Bill 22-1673? Councilwoman Sawyer?
Thanks, Madam President. What are you going to do with the rest of the site?
Sir, can you come up to the microphone?
Just for the people watching at home and on Zoom, we need the microphone.
Yep, I'm sorry. We plan to develop a small townhouse on the empty lot that's right at the corner of Frank 38th.
Okay. Is there, on this church, so a couple of months ago, we considered a historic designation that, based on like what the property could be used for if it remained, the integrity wouldn't have stood because they needed to add like doors in places where there weren't doors and things like that for our current building code standards. Have you looked into that for this building?
I think we're okay. This is probably a better question for my architect, Ryan. But I think we're okay.
Yeah, hi. We-
Can you just introduce yourself one more time for the record?
Of course. My name's Ryan Gould. I'm the architect for the project with Nathan. And we're considering adding accessible entrances to the back since that vestibule on the front, in order to remain as sort of the historic integrity that it has today, that would not be able to be ramped up to. It's right on the property line. But we will be able to kind of create accessible entries off the back door that exists today to bring it up to code.
Okay, that's really great. Thanks. That's it.
Thank you. Councilman Flynn?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Flowers, or maybe Kara Han. I find this to be a very interesting application because I don't see any, any record of the providence of the building. Who was the builder? Who was the architect? It seems to have been just an organic structure that was built by the residents of the neighborhood without any significant architect involved or master builder. Do we have any of that background? Did Historic Denver find any of it? Kara, did we find any of it?
We didn't find that, and Michael can maybe speak to that a bit. But part of what makes something a vernacular building is that it isn't typically architect-designed. It's designed by the community. It's often builder, local builders, local contractors, and that it isn't designed by an architect. That's part of the definition of vernacular. But Michael can speak if they found anything else. I'm not aware of it.
Thank you. It's kind of reminiscent of, say, a barn raising in Pennsylvania, Dutch country.
We did search, and you know, while we were able to find, you know, record of, I believe, the permit, there wasn't any builder associated with it. You know, it was built by the Swedish Evangelical Lutheran Church. They had a larger church on 19th and Walton, I believe, at the time, as a mission to serve the congregants of that neighborhood. So they could walk to it easily, more accessible. And so it was kind of just a simple church that they built up. And, you know, I'm not sure if they intended to, you know, add to it later or build more onto the land, but it just kind of never happened. And it's kind of remained as it was.
Okay, and it dates from about 1888?
Yeah. We found a record in the newspaper of the permit essentially being applied for.
All right. Thank you, Madam President. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Cashman?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. For the owner, excuse me if I missed this. What's the intention, just for the owner? What do you intend to use the historic structure for? Residential use now?
Yeah, it's currently used as a residence. And we're considering using it as a commercial use as well, just to kind of make it more accessible for the community to experience. So maybe a small office or something like that.
So no definite plans yet, just to restore the building?
Exactly. Yep. We're definitely going to restore it, but the exact use hasn't completely been determined. But I would say either commercial, office, or residential.
I love that a structure that many people would consider not extremely notable is being honored for its importance to the community. So thanks for what you're doing there.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Seeing no one else in queue, the public hearing is closed. Are there comments by members of council on Council Bill 22-1673? Seeing none in queue. I'll go quickly to see if Councilwoman Tabaka had any comments.
Thank you. My only comment is thank you to Nathan for making it a landmark preservation opportunity. I hope that if it goes residential, you also heed the request and advice from the community to make it affordable. Other than that, I support this, and I support the idea of preserving while we're also creating more opportunities in the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I will also be voting to support. And thank you for bringing to light, I think, what is a local gem in the neighborhood and keeping it alive. Madam Secretary, roll call on Council Bill 22-1673. See, Tabaka?
Aye.
Black?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Gilmore? Herndon?
Aye.
Hines? Cashman?
Aye.
Kinich?
Aye.
Ortega?
Aye.
Sandoval?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Madam President? Aye. Madam Secretary, close the voting and announce the results. Eleven ayes. Eleven ayes. Council Bill 22-1673 has passed. Thank you very much. Councilwoman Kinich, will you please put Council Bill 23-0005 on the floor for final passage?
Yes. I move that Council Bill 23-0005 be placed upon final consideration and do pass.
Thank you, and that's been moved and seconded. The required public hearing for Council Bill 23-5 is open. May we have the staff report? Hi, Fran.
Good afternoon again, members of City Council. I'm Penia Fiel with Community Planning and Development. Today I'm covering Brandon that had an emergency, so be gentle with your questions. Just learning about this case. It is 2107 to 2119 West at 29th Avenue. So let's look at the request. So this is also an applicant-driven application requesting to change the zoning classification at 2107, 2111, 2115, and 2119 West 29th Avenue. The subject properties are located at the northwest corner of West 29th Avenue and North Umatilla Street. 2115 and 2119 West 29th Avenue are currently zoned GMU 3, UO 3, and they contain two single-unit dwellings. 2107 and 2111 West 29th Avenue are currently zoned UMS 3 and contain a two-story office building built in 1935. The applicants are proposing to rezon the properties to UMS 3 DO 8 to better facilitate redevelopment. For the properties at 2107 and 2111 West 29th Avenue that are already zoned UMS 3, it basically means that we would now also apply the Design Overlay 8, which is intended to encourage neighborhood mixed-use areas with non-residential active uses at the street level, promoting pedestrian-oriented building frontages and providing sufficient space for transitions between the public realm and private dwellings. Let's look at the location and the surrounding context of the properties. So the subject properties are located in Council District 1, which is Councilmember Sandoval's district, and they are in the Highland neighborhood. As mentioned before, the parcel at the corner is currently zoned UMS 3 with the two western parcels zoned GMU 3, UO 3. There is a diversity of zone districts surrounding the subject properties, including multi-unit, mixed-use, and main street in a variety of neighborhood contexts. The subject sites are within the park at 51st Avenue and Sunai Street View Lane, which allows for a maximum building height of between 88 and 94 feet in the subject sites. Given that the maximum height allowed in UMS 3 DO 8 is only 45 feet, this won't be an issue as the buildings won't exceed the view lane. Seen on the land use map, two of the subject sites are currently used as single-unit residential uses. The corner property is mixed-use. The surrounding areas show a mix of single and multi-unit residential, commercial retail, mixed-use, and office uses. This slide here shows the existing building form and scale. You can see the subject properties on the images to the right. Now that we better understand the context on the subject sites, let's take a quick look at the rezoning process. Throughout the rezoning process, application notifications have been provided according to code requirements. Planning Board recommended approval anonymously on November 16, and the case was presented to the Land Use Transportation Infrastructure Committee on January 3. Staff has received one letter of support from HONEY and four letters of opposition from community members. The letters reference concerns related to parking and additional building height being allowed through both of the current and proposed zoning building height, although both the current and the proposed zoning is limited to three stories. Sorry. Now moving on to review criteria of the Denver zoning code. For rezoning to be approved by City Council, it must be found that the requested map amendment is consistent with five review criteria found on the Denver zoning code. Our role as staff planners is to evaluate the requested district, in this case, the UMS 3 DO 8, against the five review criteria. The first criterion is consistency with adopted plans. There are three plans applicable to its rezoning. We have Comprehensive Plan 2040, we have Blueprint Denver, and we have the Highland Neighborhood Plan from 1986. Stated on the staff report, the rezoning is consistent with several goals in the Comprehensive Plan. The requested map amendment would allow for a broader variety of uses, including housing, retail services, and employment at an intensity consistent with the desired for dense, vocal, mixed-use neighborhood expressed in Comprehensive Plan 2040. Now moving on to Blueprint Denver. The subject properties are shown on the context map as the urban neighborhood context. The Future Places Map designates the subject properties as low, medium residential. These places have a mix of low-to-mid-scale multi-unit residential options with limited mixed-use along arterial and collector streets with high-intensity buildings compatibly integrated. With West 29th Avenue designated as a residential arterial and a mix of uses located at the foot of 15th Street, the proposed UMS 3 DO 8 district is consistent with the place type and street type guidance, allowing a mix of uses in a building compatible with the surrounding pronounced retail note. The growth area in Blueprint Denver is all other areas of the city. These areas are anticipated to see 10% employment growth and 20% housing growth by 2040. The proposed rezoning to UMS 3 with the inclusion of the Design Overlay 8 is consistent with some of the additional strategies in Blueprint Denver, as it will ensure that the site contributes positively to the existing retail node in the Highland neighborhood with active ground floor uses and pedestrian-friendly building form standards. And finally, the Highland Neighborhood Plan. This neighborhood plan was adopted, this neighborhood plan was adopted by City Council in 1986. And while it could be considered dated, the plan does provide guidance and recommendations that are relevant and consistent with the requested zone district. The plan recommends redevelopment of this site through a PUD. However, with the adoption of the Denver zoning code and the creation of the Design Overlay 8, the application of the UMS 3 DO 8 zone district would provide building forms and uses that activate the public street, the public street edge, and realize the plan's vision. The proposed zone district would provide uniform main street zoning applied to this half of the face block. Redevelopment of all three parcels would create a neighborhood gateway that recognizes the importance of this intersection as called out in the plan, allow for the mix of residential and commercial uses, and provide a better transition between the higher intensity of use east of the intersection and the less intensive but mixed-use along West 29th Avenue. For these reasons, the requested UMS 3 DO 8 zone district is consistent with the neighborhood plan. Staff also finds that the requested rezoning meets the next two criteria. The rezoning will result in the uniformed district regulations, and it will further the public health, safety, and welfare, primarily through its implementation of adopted land use plans and fostering neighborhood-supported reinvestment on a site that would benefit from assemblage and thoughtful redevelopment. Staff finds two justifying circumstances for this map amendment. The first being substantial redevelopment and reinvestment since 2010 and the adoption of Comprehensive Plan 2040 and Blueprint Denver, which point to exceptional design outcomes along key corridors and at prominent intersections. Lastly, the proposed rezoning is consistent with the urban neighborhood context, main street, three stories, with the inclusion of the Design Overlay 8 zone district purpose and intent. Therefore, CPD recommends approval based on finding all rezoning review criteria has been met.
Thank you so much, Fran. We have two individuals signed up to speak this evening. Both are joining us via Zoom. Our first speaker is Ted Schultz.
Hello, I'm not sure if you heard me when I first spoke. My name is Ted Schultz from Denver. My address is 863 Santa Fe Drive. And I am happy to answer any questions you may have on the project, on the rezon.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker signed up via Zoom is Marcia Mueller.
Hello. My name is actually pronounced Marcia. And my husband and I own the corner and one of the houses. Our neighbor is participating in this project as well. As you can see, we've worked for the last couple of years with our neighborhood and with our city council person to make sure that we comply with all the visions that Denver has articulated in plans from the mid-1980s. And we are excited about the potential to combine all the properties for one redevelopment that we believe will really help the neighborhood. And thank you for any questions you might have.
Great. Thank you so much. That concludes our speakers. Are there questions from members of council on Council Bill 23-5? Seeing none in queue, public hearing is closed. Are there comments by members of council on Council Bill 23-5? Councilwoman Sandoval?
Thank you, Madam President. I asked that my colleagues support this application. Marcia and the other applicants stopped this application from moving forward for over six months to work with the Highland United Neighborhood, Registered Neighborhood Organization, to come to an outcome that led to them applying the Design Overlay 8. This is one of the unique intersections in Denver where five streets meet up. And this corner is a key intersection to where it turns from 15th to 29th in the Highland neighborhood. I believe it meets all of the criteria and had the applicant went above and beyond to make sure that there was a better outcome for the neighborhood by applying a zone district that has better transparency-
and also providing the Design Overlay 8, which will create active street floor use along the redevelopment of this site. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. And seeing no one else in queue, Madam Secretary, roll call on Council Bill 23-5.
Sita Baca?
Aye.
Black?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Gilmore? Herndon?
Aye.
Hines? Cashman?
Aye.
Kneech?
Aye.
Ortega?
Aye.
Sandoval?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Madam President?
Aye. Madam Secretary, close the voting and announce the result.
Eleven ayes.
Eleven ayes. Council Bill 23-5 has passed. Thank you so much. On Monday, March 13th, council will hold a required public hearing on Council Bill 23-77, changing the zoning classification for 2030 and 2032 Blake Street in five points, and required public hearing on Council Bill 23-89, changing the zoning classification for 6298 North Argonne Street in DIA. Any protest against Council Bills 23-77 or 23-89 must be filed at the council office no later than noon on Monday, March 6th. There being no further business before this body, this meeting is adjourned.
...of our state, or our city and county. So Bob McDonald, thank you for being here. Melissa, I'm not even going to try to say yo' name.